Good evening. The City of Salem, the City Council Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, met in the council chambers on Monday, February 26, 2024, at 6:30 PM for the purpose of discussing a resolution for tax increment financing for Chambers Property Holdings LLC for a restaurant at 65 Washington Street, and a tax increment financing agreement with Chambers Property Holdings LLC and Chambers Restaurant Group LLC for a restaurant at 65 Washington Street. A notice of this meeting was posted on February 16, 2024, at 3:27 PM. With us in attendance tonight is Councillor Stott and Councillor Prozynski from the Administration and Finance Committee, and also from the Committee of the Whole, we have Councillors Davis, Councillor Swatzenfeldt, Councillor Marsillo, Councillor Hapworth, and Councillor Harvey. Also with us tonight is Mayor Pangallo, Kate Newell Smith, our principal planner, and members of the Chamber Restaurant Group, Chef Erin Chambers and Shayna Chambers. We have in front of us tonight a resolution and TIF agreement for a proposed tax increment finance agreement for the Chambers Property Holdings and Restaurant Group for the commercial space at 65 Washington Street. They currently operate Settler's Restaurant. The resolution is to allow the city to enter into and execute the TIF agreement. It's for a five-year TIF, and the TIF is not for the base assessed value of the property that we continue to collect. It's for the difference between the projected assessed value and the base value. We will first hear from the mayor, then Ms. Newell Smith, our principal planner, will make a presentation and give us all the details, and then we will have questions from the council, and later we will take public comment as well. I'd like to remind everyone to speak right into the microphones so we can hear you all. So first, I'd like to invite up Mayor Pangallo.
Thank you, Councillor. Appreciate your letting me speak first. I do have to go for a school committee meeting, so I apologize, and I'll have to run after my remarks. So this proposal that's before you is leveraging a tool that the city has at our disposal. I got a lot of great questions from councillors after this was filed, and I hope we've been able to address many of them. This is not the first tax increment financing agreement the city's proposed entering into in the past. Over the last decade, we've done about a half dozen of them, including most recently the one for Crowley Wind Services for the offshore wind terminal project, which is certainly the largest tax increment finance agreement that the city's entered into. This proposal, I believe, is fully merited. This is a tool that, incidentally, is available to any business or commercial development that's seeking it, if they're making new jobs for our community, if they're advancing other goals like creating active economic use of a vacant space, if it's generating additional tax revenues from the city. For example, in this case, we'll get meals excise taxes, which are not exempt from, under a TIF agreement, those will fully be collected by the city. In this case, we're generating economic activity in a space that's been empty for almost three years, and honestly, if you look at the Main Street's downtown vacancy numbers, one of the leading causes of the fact that we're not pretty much at 100% occupancy is this space. So the opportunity to put something in there that's not only a good addition for creating jobs, but also an opportunity to create taxes beyond the property taxes, taxes that'll be generated by visitors as well as residents who choose to dine there, really makes it, I feel, a good step for our city to take. The other thing that we look at is the challenge of developing a site, and in this case, we have a facility that was really not built out for restaurant use entirely, so there's a lot of infrastructure that's going to have to go into it to make it usable. There's some questions about tax agreements for residential use, and there is a program for tax deferral for residential properties, the tax increment agreements that are available through the H-TIP program. Those kinds of tax agreements are similar in nature, as Councillor Merkel said, that they are structured around the increment, so the additional value beyond the base. So I think that's really important, because sometimes, I think, when we think about the TIE agreements for residential property, or the TIF agreements for commercial properties, a lot of people think that this is an exemption on all the taxes paid, and that's not the case. This is an exemption on the difference of value between the base value and the final value of the property. So the proposal, which Kate will walk through in a moment here, is a deferral of that increment in taxes of 100% for two years, and then declining over the last three years to 0% in the full amount. And again, it only applies to the property taxes, not to any of the meals taxes that are generated. You know, the TIF is a tool that we have at our disposal. It's a way of leveraging economic activity. You could think of it, like we talked about during the Crowley discussions, as a way for us to show some investment and support in economic activity that we want to encourage. And that means that there's also a judgment that's made when an applicant may come in looking for a TIF. If we don't feel that's necessarily a kind of economic activity that would be something we'd want to see, the city has its discretion. We have the judgment to present it to you. The council has its own discretion and its judgment about whether or not they think it's something they want to see advanced in a certain location. In this case, I feel strongly that this proposal checks all the boxes. Not only are we activating the space, generating the additional meals taxes and property taxes, creating the jobs, but we also have, in this instance, an operator who's proven to the community that they've done this before, that they know what they're doing, and they have the capacity to be able to do it well. So I'm proud to support it and to present it to you. I hope that you're able to act favorably on it. I understand that you may still have additional questions, but again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you first, and I apologize that I do have to go off to the school committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pangallo. Does anyone have any questions for him before he has to go?
I'm happy to stick around for some questions if you want to take this out of order.
Thank you, Mayor Pangallo. Appreciate your time. Yes, and next we'll hear from Ms. Newell Smith.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'm just going to share my screen so you can see the presentation. So, as Mayor Pangallo mentioned, the TIF is designed to foster job creation and stimulate business growth. It's an economic development tool that offers a company a tax incentive in exchange for commitment to new job creation, existing job retention, and private investment in a project. It allows the city to make a joint investment in a project with the intent that any short-term gains via property tax assessments be reinvested and leveraged so that the city and the business can receive larger financial gains in the future. TIFs are negotiated between the mayor's office and the business, and then presented to the council for review and approval. The state, through its Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, the EACC, must also approve them. Once approved, the project moves forward, the business expands through its investment, and the property reaches its full improved value. Once the project is complete, the TIF will start the following July 1st. So if the agreement is in place now, but it's not acted on until the first day of the fiscal year once the project is complete. So how does a TIF work? Well, it temporarily reduces taxes on the value of the improvement to a property, and that's what I call the increment. There's no net loss of tax revenue. The property owner is obligated to pay the property taxes on the value of the property before the investment throughout the term of the TIF. The only break is on that increased value, which is why the TIF doesn't start until the project is done and the property is reassessed. In this diagram, the owner will always be paying the taxes as shown in the blue rectangle, which is labeled number one. The dark gray triangle, number two, represents the property value increase that naturally occurs as a city annually reassesses property values. Together, the blue rectangle and the gray triangle represent the property value that the owner must pay taxes on, no matter the TIF. The light green rectangle, number three, represents the financial investment that the Chambers are putting into the property, that will increase its value once the investment is realized and the project is complete, which is the light gray area, number four in that diagram. The TIF only applies to that monetary value as shown by the light gray area. The owner is not receiving an exemption on the blue and dark gray areas. These will remain taxed at the commercial tax rates with no exemption. The state requires that a TIF be in place for at least five years, though no more than 20, and the exemption must be at least 5% each year. It's important to note that there is no size or asset requirement for businesses to participate in the TIF program. Any current or prospective Salem-based business can express interest in a TIF, which begins with a letter to the mayor. And then again, to reiterate on how the TIF is executed, it must be approved by the city council and also by the state. So Chef Erin Chambers and his wife and co-owner Shayna Chambers opened Settler on Line Street right before the pandemic struck. In fact, I remember they were at the Salem Redevelopment Authority in November of 2019 trying to get approval for facade changes they wanted to make, and then along came COVID. One would think that this new intimate 48-seat restaurant wouldn't stand a chance against a global pandemic that shut down virtually all activity outside of your home. However, Settler did survive, and the Chambers and their staff grew their business, welcoming residents and visitors alike, and providing an excellent and tasty experience. Now the Chambers are looking to expand and bring a new concept to Salem's dining scene. Not only will they be providing another downtown dining opportunity, but they want to do it in a highly visible, if not the most visible vacancy downtown, the commercial condo at BRICS. This space has been vacant since it was constructed in October of 2021. It served as a landing space for construction debris. Its windows hosted Salem Main Street's banners during the pandemic, and it was marketed not only by the private realtors, but also by Salem's business recruitment team. The 3,200-square-foot space is a gap in our otherwise commercial center, thriving commercial center, where we consistently see less than 5% vacancy rates year-round. The condominium is a blank canvas with no existing infrastructure. It's a dream for an entrepreneur who wants to execute a specific vision. However, reality hits when that entrepreneur realizes the cost to build out this blank space, so that is not only functional, but exceptional and a compliment to the downtown. When we entertain a TIF, we want to make sure that the business and the project meet specific goals, primarily economic development goals, business growth, job creation, tax-based growth. If a project does not meet these goals, then it may not be a good fit for the program. This Bernadette proposal hits these goals through the expansion of the Chambers Restaurant Group, creating 27 new jobs, and expanding the tax base through increasing the assessed value of the condo via property taxes, and bringing a new restaurant online that will expand the tax base through contributing to the city's meals tax revenues. Additionally, this project will transform a long vacant space in a highly visible location into a thriving restaurant that will bring activity to the northern end of the downtown. The Chambers have committed to creating 27 new job opportunities. These are jobs at a variety of skill levels and a mix of part- and full-time positions. Salaried employees have access to sick and vacation time benefits, and the Chambers have a goal to implement a health insurance plan for their employees at both Settler and Bernadette. And they are exploring a partnership with WorkWiser Preventative Employee Mental Health Training to offer their employees access to additional programs focused on mental health. Modules in the program focus on work-life balance, stress management, and navigating substance use problems. Chef Chambers currently sits on Root's Chef Advisory Council that includes both local and greater Boston chefs and hospitality industry leaders. Bernadette will be an opportunity for the Chambers team to share culinary knowledge with Root's potential youth applicants, host Root gatherings, and to support the community. So for this proposal, we're looking at a five-year term, which will begin the first fiscal year once the project is complete. The first two years, we're proposing 100% exemption of the increment, and then each subsequent year, the exemption percentage decreases by 25%. The full tax assessment on the improved space will be issued in year six. Over the five years, we estimate that the total tax bill would be around $118,000. This schedule results in the Chambers paying about 73% of that full tax value, which is the base property value plus the value of the increment, once the project is done. And the city would be exempting approximately 27% of the taxes. So in dollar terms, this translates to an estimated $87,000 in collected tax revenue and $31,000 in the exempted taxes over the five years. As Mayor Pangallo mentioned, we have done several TIFs over the past. This is just a little sample of four of them. We did a Tropical Products TIF in 2021, one for A&amp;J King in 2017, Hotel Salem in 2016, and Jacklean's Cookies in 2014. The Bernadette proposal is consistent with our other local TIFs in that the Chambers are local to the North Shore, and they've owned and operated their business in Salem, and they have chosen to expand their business here in Salem, like the owners of Tropical Products, A&amp;J King, and Hotel Salem. The Chambers are going to bring vitality to a vacant, underutilized downtown space. Hotel Salem fought financial, sought to financial support through the TIF to revitalize and repurpose an underutilized property on the ped mall in the heart of our downtown. And as far as numbers go, all of the agreements are for five-year terms, with all of them starting at 100% tax exemption on the incremental value and decreasing over the term. The Bernadette proposal will result in 73% of the total tax bill being paid over the term, and this is right in line with the other TIFs, whose percentages paid range from 63% to 76%. And the proposal has a 27% total tax exemption rate, which again is within the range of the others, whose percentages run from 24% to 36%. The job creation numbers are tougher to compare, though even though Bernadette is a much smaller business than the others that are featured in this presentation, the job numbers are within the range of those provided by the other TIFs. So there's always obligations with agreements. The city's obligation, if approved, would be to fulfill the tenants of the TIF agreement upon project completion. This primarily means that we adhere to the TIF exemption schedule. The Chambers are obligated to build out the commercial space at BRICS so that it is a full-service restaurant. They must create 27 permanent positions within a two-year period, and to fill these positions, the Chambers need to use reasonable efforts in accordance with all applicable laws to give priority to qualified Salem residents. They must continue to support and grow their relationship with Root. They must use reasonable efforts, again, in accordance with applicable laws, to give priority to qualified local vendors for products and services, and they must submit annual reports to the EACC during the term of the TIF. These reports are public documents and can be found on the state's Office of Business Development website. So next steps, there is an EACC meeting on March 13th. So depending on tonight's deliberations and discussions, if the committee votes to offer a positive recommendation to the full council, then I will bring the TIF to that March 13th state meeting. So they will vote that day. Your city council has a meeting on March 14th to consider the recommendation. Again, if it's positive, you'll vote that night, I think, if you choose to, and if there is a positive vote to accept the agreement, then I will work with the clerk's office on gathering all the documents and sending them off to the state and getting everything executed. And that is my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Should I keep my share screen up in case you need to go back to things?
Sure. Yeah, I would think that's helpful. Yes, thank you, and thank you for the presentation. It was very helpful. Do we have any questions from the council? Councillor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. Thank you, Kate, for the presentation. Very informative. One question that popped up based off of something that the mayor said, and then you touched upon it again. For TIFs in general, you said that this was an applicant, the first step of requesting a TIF is via a letter of interest to the mayor. Could you tell me how many, do you know how many TIFs have been requested through the city or denied? Do you have that information?
I don't have a total number. I'm in my fifth year working for the city, and we've gotten maybe two other letters of intent that haven't been brought to this stage, so we don't get a lot.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe one or two a year.
Thanks. I was just curious on that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councillor Marsillo?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Kate. I have a couple of questions. Could you talk about how the partnership with Root is going to be measured when you say that it's a continued and strengthening partnership, and that's one of the conditions of it? How is that measured?
I don't have an answer for you on that.
Okay. Also, when this happens when it hits project completion, what is that definition of project completion?
Typically, we consider a certificate of occupancy, whether it's a temporary or a full. It's when people can be in the space safely, it's been inspected, it's ready to have people in the space and acting as a restaurant.
So is it the Board of Health, or is it the building inspectors?
I go with the building inspector.
Okay.
But I know Board of Health is part of that process, I believe, or the Health Department.
Yep. Do you know how long the whole project build-out is supposed to take?
Sure. I believe the Chambers would like to be open July or early August.
Of this year?
This year.
Okay. So then the TIF would start the following year?
It would start July 1.
Of next year, of 2025?
2025.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, 2025.
All right. All right. Hold on. Is the TIF transferable to a new owner?
I have notes. Let me grab my notes so I don't say the wrong thing. I did find this out. I talked with the state today, and I just want to make sure I give you the correct information. So this is a local-only TIF, which means they're not, the Chambers aren't seeking tax credits through the state. They're only looking for the local exemption through the city. So that means the agreement is between the city and the Chambers entities. So if the Chambers decide to leave, or Bernadette is no longer during the term of the TIF, we can terminate the agreement ourselves, because it's between the city and the Chambers. We don't need a state to weigh in or to vote on it. It's our decision. We can tap our local city solicitor for assistance in terminating that agreement. So it's not transferable.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be transferable.
Okay. Do we know how many seats approximately there will be at this new restaurant? 77. Do we have just kind of a rough estimate of the amount of restaurant taxes received from Settler?
About, we generate about $90,000.
You have to come up. You have to come up here.
I'm sorry.
Hi. I'd like to invite, yes, the Chambers group to come up and answer some of these questions. Thank you, and thank you for coming up. And just a reminder to move the mic wherever it's helpful to, yeah, have you speak right into it. Thank you.
We, Settler, we generate about $90,000 in meals tax credits every year, meals credit, sorry.
And can you remind, on there's, Ledger has, no, Settler has 48 seats?
We have an occupancy of 48, but right now, we're running about 30 seats inside the restaurant. The 48 applies when we do the patio outside, extend outside.
Okay.
Bernadette is projected to, sorry, Bernadette is projected to do at least double-setlist numbers.
Okay. Thank you. Yep, thank you.
While you're here, could you possibly answer the question regarding Root?
Oh, I would ask Alison Cafrey.
Sure. Great, thank you.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Alison Cafrey. I'm the executive director at Root, and I've been in that role for about two years. I've known Shayna for over 20 years and have gotten to know Erin and the Settler team for the past two years in that role. And Settler has been, and the whole team, has been a really great partner for us. They've hosted our trainees in our externship program in their kitchen. Erin and his team have come to Root to train our trainees and our alumni in our kitchen. They've helped us put on really successful fundraising events. We've hosted staff events at the restaurant, so we're excited to grow that partnership. As was mentioned, Erin serves on our Chef Advisory Council, and so in that role, he helps us strengthen our curriculum, helps offer additional training opportunities, comes in and serves as a guest chef when he has a moment. And so we're excited to, you know, expand on all of those instances with this new space.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question.
Yes, Councillor Marsillo?
I have one more question about the health insurance that you're trying to offer, if you want to.
Sure.
Thank you.
This is kind of, this is an important issue, right, for restaurant workers, especially part-time restaurant workers? Can you talk a little bit more about your vision for providing health care and other benefits for these employees?
Sure. So we've initially just done some research on health care benefits.
You have to talk right into that.
Just since the research on health care benefits, and I think with the expansion of Bernadette, we can also offer it to our team at Settler. Settler's very small, and so while we've been wanting to do it, making sure we can do it in a cost-effective way to give them the benefits that would make sense for them financially is what we're kind of trying to figure out. We obviously don't want to offer it and then have it be too expensive for them, so we need to make sure that we can offer, you know, 50% plus up to 100% of paying premiums for our staff. So that's medical. So we're doing our research there to see, you know, what can we do now that we have two operating restaurants? Another thing that we're really trying to think about is mental health, and so we are also in early stages of researching and partnering with companies that can help us do training for mental health. I know Kate was mentioning some of that. Just being able to talk to our management team about identifying employees or staff that may be having issues, helping employees understand what it means to have work-life balance, being open about when they might not be able to work hours that they're working, how they support their families when they're working nights, substance abuse issues and things like that. And so figuring out what experts we can partner with that can offer, you know, an ear, an direct access for our employees to reach out to them as needed. So we're just kind of in early stages of what that program would look like for us.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'd like to remind everyone that was Shayna Chambers, who was just speaking. And Kate, maybe we can stop sharing screen just so it might be more comfortable for people watching to see the discussion, since we moved on to that. Thank you. And Councillor Davis?
Thank you, Chair. Not being a member of the committee, I was wondering if you could speak a little bit more towards the, I guess, potential benefit for residents in the greater community. I know that's kind of, or at least my understanding of the expectation we go into these agreements. It was helpful to hear a little bit more about the relationship with Root, and 27 new jobs is very exciting, but if you want to speak more to that, it'd be helpful. Thank you.
Sure. So I think the main benefits to the community as a whole, in addition to that job creation, is the tax base. So not only will the property taxes be increased through the investment that the Chambers are putting in to raise the property value of the condo, they're also going to be bringing in meals taxes, and as Chef Erin mentioned, it is a significant amount of meals tax that can be realized by this restaurant. So I think just expanding the tax base is a primary benefit to the community and is a primary benefit of the TIF program generally.
Any further follow-up questions, Councillor? No? Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I'm not sure which one, and one of first, Councillor Swatzenfeldt, and then Councillor Hapworth.
Thank you, Chair, not being a member of the committee. I do have a couple of questions about how these agreements, similar to Councillor Marsillo's question, get measured. So this concept of, you know, within the law, reasonable, you know, process to hire local residents, same with local vendors, how is that measured by the city? How do you know if they don't do it? And I mean, absolutely no offense when I ask these questions. I am not, I'm not trying to imply anyone's, you know, not above board here, but I do think from a process perspective, I'd love more information as to how you kind of work with vendors or work with these folks to ensure that there is good faith effort there.
Sure. So they do have to submit an annual report to the state, which I can log in and see. Anyone can log in and see. So we can, they'll have to report on their job creation and who they're hiring. So we can, they'll have to report on their job creation and who they're hiring. I also anticipate keeping in touch with the chambers throughout everything to see how they're doing, just as part of the economic development work that I do. And then I can also, I look to their past practices with Settler and, you know, they're doing this already. And I, I think just keeping tabs on them, you know, just as a friendly city employee checking in.
And I appreciate that. I think, I think part of my question is if we ever find ourselves in a situation where that good faith effort is not made, what is within the city's rights and what can you do, or what would you do in that scenario to ensure that, that a better partnership is realized?
Sure, so I believe there's language in the agreement itself that if either side is not fulfilling their obligations, there are steps that we can take to remedy that. I just want to look through it real quickly to see. Okay, so I am in section B, B nine. So it says if the owner fails to meet the obligations, and it lists B one through B six, we can take action to notify the state via the EACC and revoke, take steps to revoke the agreement. I believe it talks about, you know, giving days of receipt of notice and the process in number B ten, but that would be our method of, you know, taking back if someone, if, if either side is not fulfilling the obligations of the agreement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Hapworth?
Thank you Chair Merkel, and not being a member of the committee. I guess from your perspective Kate, why do you, why is, so this is, we can agree this is a prime location in Salem, it sees a lot of commuter traffic going by it all day long. What is the reason that this has remained vacant for so long? Do you have a perspective that you could offer us on, on that?
Sure, and this is just my own perspective. It's a great location, it's a great, has great visibility, it's brand new, so those are all pluses. I think a major downside is the build-out of that space. It wasn't built maybe with the intention that it could have been built as far as making sure that there was infrastructure to allow a commercial enterprise to come in and be able to come in and, and make it their own, but not have to have that huge capital output to turn it into a usable space as far as plumbing and electricity and, and that kind of infrastructure. I think that was a major thing. For a while, the space was being leased, it was for lease, not for sale, and I believe the lease price was quite high. So if you take a thirty-six, thirty-seven dollar square foot price tag, and then you add on a million dollar build-out, it becomes nearly impossible for a business to come in, especially if it's, you know, a locally owned small business, not some big national chain that has a lot of money. And then I think another challenge is the space as far as around the building. The building takes up the block, which is what we want in a downtown for our buildings. But there's no space for a dumpster, and there's hard, not many spaces for deliveries. And so I think the chambers are, have a great solution because they do have Settler across the street, and they have resources there that they can tap to overcome some of these location space deficiencies that might be associated with the brick space. Those are just my thoughts on it as a.
Yeah, I know that.
Professional.
Right, right. Yeah, and I think that's, that's the question on, I think, a lot of people's minds is why, why did this remain vacant for so long, and how do we prevent this sort of thing from happening in the future? There is, I think, some concern around, you know, we're, like, I specifically would love to see this restaurant in this spot with, run by these folks here. What's to stop the next restaurant from coming in, or the next developer from building condos and building out the space too big and not including what needs to be included and letting it sit on the market until we come in and give them another TIF? And I think that's logically where I'm working through right now on this. And you met, I guess the numbers that you mentioned around the number of TIFs that are requested is much, much lower than I thought it would be. Do you have, again, this is your perspective, but do you have any perspective on why more restaurants aren't requesting TIFs or more, more businesses or developers in general?
Sure, so I think we aren't seeing a whole lot of TIFs, especially for commercial spaces, especially downtown, it's because most of our downtown is built out. The infrastructure is there in all of these spaces. So a TIF works the best when there is a low base value and you put money in and you get a high property value at the end of that input of money. So, because that creates that increment, which is where the exemption comes in. So if you have a vacancy downtown and it was a restaurant in its former life, and there's a new restaurateur coming in, they're going to do what they want to do to make it their own, their own concept, but the infrastructure's there. So the, the investment that they're putting in won't increase that property value because the investment is for paint and for seats and for point-of-sale systems. It's not for plumbing and electricity and venting, those big-ticket items. So I think that's why we don't see a lot of restaurants come through. I think this is a very unique proposal in that respect. We don't see a lot of brand-new spaces that are like this, that need this kind of influx of capital to make them usable.
Okay. So from your, from your perspective, what we would be investing in here, in addition to getting a great restaurant, could potentially be the infrastructure in place for something in the future if, you know, as, as things happen in the future?
Right, it's, this investment will support making the space a usable space for the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Counselor Prozmoski?
Thank you. Thank you Kate, for the presentation. I guess my question, and which is kind of a cousin to what Counselor Hapworth is, who, who qualifies for a TIF and who doesn't? The reason I'm asking that is because Salem is going through, has a lot of redevelopment sites with a lot of properties that will have residential above, commercial space down below. Those people that are going to be building into the commercial spaces down below, will they be asking for TIFs? And is there a rule that says you are allowed to apply for a TIF if you meet this criteria? And I just want to know who qualifies and who, who doesn't qualify for a TIF?
Sure, so thinking big picture, for a new building that's mixed-use, has commercial and residential, it won't qualify for a TIF unless that commercial space is a condo ownership. So if it's just a leased space, it won't qualify. And a mixed-use building would need to go through a different program to get any sort of tax incentive. So we have the H-DIP program, which is for market rate residential development, and then you have the UCH-TIF program, which I believe you went through that process for the Lee Fort Terrace. That's a program for like a mixed-use district and to get the taxes exemptions. So I think, and also referencing back what Counselor Hapworth mentioned about how do we ensure that this doesn't happen, this blank canvas is created just for the sake of creating a commercial space? I think it was a good lesson learned for us in the planning department to take a more close look at what a space entails, not just, oh, they did the commercial and checked the box, but to, to actually see that there's some infrastructure being put in to make the build-out in the future much more affordable. So, that, and to, now to switch back to your question, there's nothing to stop someone from asking for a TIF. You know, the TIF is open to those who are putting in a capital investment and, and there's that change in property value that's, you know, realized. You know, all of the inquiries go through the mayor's office, the mayor reviews them, looks at the merits, looks to see if they're a good fit, are they doing jobs, are we, are we keeping manufacturers in the state? That's a big thing for the state. And, and then he just evaluates each proposal as it comes. But, you know, we're not, no one's banging down our door for these programs, you know? I know there's going to be more in front of you in the future as housing development gets underway because the H-DIP program was recapitalized, but, you know, we're not getting a dozen TIF requests a year, it really is only one or two.
So what I'm hearing is that someone who rents commercial spaces and doesn't, doesn't, isn't applicable, doesn't apply to them. It's somebody who owns the space, and then you take it from that step forward.
Right, so because the, the program is for, based on property taxes, so the person who pays the property taxes needs to be the person with the TIF is. So the agreement before you tonight is with Chambers, the property group, but they have an agreement with the restaurant group to lease it out, which is why we included them on the TIF. So it's kind of like a tripartite, but because it's based on property taxes and paying your property taxes, it goes to the property owner.
Okay. My hat's off to the chambers for jumping into this business, we all, I think everybody here on the council at one time or another has probably worked her own in the, in the restaurant business, and we know what a crapshoot it is. It's, and the work that's involved in, in, in running a restaurant business. So I guess the question, my question to you is, if it doesn't work out, the TIF goes away. Correct? Yes. I'll ask you that, Kate, for us.
Right, so it doesn't go away automatically?
But it can be transferred, if, with city approval.
This.
In other words, if, if the chambers, if, let's say it doesn't fail, but they make it a great restaurant and it's running like gangbusters, and they decide to sell it within a few years or a little bit down the road, the TIF continues to the new owner? No, it doesn't.
Not automatically, no. No, so if the chambers decide to sell and it stays a restaurant and the new owner would like to continue the benefit of the agreement, we, I believe we need to go back to the state because we'd be taking the chambers off the agreement and bringing the new owners on. So I believe that would need a vote from the state, just like they need to approve the agreement before you tonight. And then if the, if the chambers decide to leave and the city's like, that's it, we're not going to keep going with this TIF, then we would work with our city solicitor to take the agreement and, and end it.
Good. And you folks are planning to keep both restaurants going at the same time. Very good. I wish you all the best, and I mean that genuinely. Thank you.
Counselor Musillo?
Thank you. Um, Kate, I just want to back up again about the granting of approvals for buildings and this unbuilt-out space, basically a shell. So it, it sounds like you guys are learning your lessons from this for future, future approvals. Is that at the planning board level or at an H-DIP level? Do you know? I mean, how do we, how do we make sure this doesn't happen again?
Sure, so I think at the planning board level, when they're reviewing plans, anything downtown is reviewed by the redevelopment authority, so at that level as well. I'm not as familiar with how H-DIP works, so I, other than a project having to go through site plan review or special permit review, I don't know what else is involved with H-DIP. But yeah, it would be a, you know, the local permitting level to look at these spaces and to look at the, the engineering of them.
Okay. All right, and I just want to double-check my numbers here before you guys leave. So the, the loss to the city with this, with this approval would be about thirty-one thousand dollars in property taxes, correct?
So that's using our estimated numbers?
Using the estimate, right, right. Whereas the restaurant tax coming to the city from this new space is likely to be...
I mean, Settler is ninety, so, I mean, at least a hundred and fifty.
At least a hundred and fifty a year.
In meals tax.
In meals tax.
And that's on top of the property taxes?
Well, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? No? Yes, yep, Counselor Stott.
Thank you Chair Merkel, just out of curiosity, because I'm trying to pitch you the space, is outdoor dining a consideration or available? Is there any space there for outdoor dining along the sidewalk? Any plans? I'm just curious.
Um, I'm not sure if the chambers have.
Potential on Church Street, but it, it needs to be vetted out.
Okay, so a potential on Church Street, and they would have to go through the, the new process and the new policy?
Okay, I was just curious that. Thanks.
Great, any other questions from the council? No? Okay, I will take public comment at this time. I'll start with anybody in the chambers that would like to speak. Yes, come on up. Thank you, and please state your name and address if you like.
Over Seventh Cedar Street. So I think that it's been acknowledged here tonight that a large part of the delay in having this space developed was the lease rate that was being asked for, the thirty-six hundred, sorry, thirty-six dollars a square foot for this market is a very high lease rate, and it was a deterrent as reflected in the SRA minutes to the space being leased. I, I want to also express concern that the city would be putting their thumb on the scale in approving this TIF. In other words, potentially in a confined market for high-end restaurants, that it's not a, an infinite number of high-end restaurants that this city can foster when the average income here is reported to be sixty-five thousand dollars a year, right? So comparable entree prices to Settler makes this a high-end venture. It therefore serves a, a small portion of our city in terms of who makes enough money to go to this entity, to afford it. Additionally, I question whether we ought to be engaging in this when I, we know that restaurants are highly volatile, it's a highly volatile sector of the economy. As many of you know from having looked into this, many restaurants fail in year one, a lot fail by year five. We have a number of givens about the Salem market. One is the capacity for parking, including in October, and that part of downtown has a finite amount of parking that's available, and it will be a stressor for a high-end restaurant to be able to accommodate for a, almost a month, if not six weeks of every year, the quantities on the weekends when most restaurants make their money for the high-end patron to come to this kind of, of a restaurant. One of the things that I question is missing from these numbers that you've been given is the value of the liquor license. I'm not sure what kind of liquor license, whether they're buying it, where it's coming from, whether we're giving them one, but there's no value included apparently in the numbers that I've seen as to a value of a liquor license. This sets a precedent for other restaurants, and I'm just not sure that in that volatile part of the marketplace, we should be engaging in a benefit for one kind of a restaurant over another. If one of the other high-end restaurants that exists in downtown goes under because of this restaurant, is that really how we want to have engaged with the market? Because I think there's a real risk. There's a finite amount of parking, there's a finite amount of patrons, yes, we can be the entertainment of the North Shore and draw people here, but we have to be able to accommodate them. I think that there are real inherent problems in expanding this in an infinite way. I'm concerned that the present facility that these operators run will go under because it's a significant commitment to run two restaurants, especially when they are so close and one could cannibalize the other. I think if somebody's deserving of a TIF in this community, it's the franchisee for Wendy's on Lower Lafayette. They are being significantly negatively impacted by the homeless encampment on South River. They've had to recently install a fence in the dead of winter to shield what's a significant visual negative from their operations, and I think that we should consider that in terms of fairness. In addition, the residential taxpayers who are paying comparable tax, taxes on their properties aren't getting a breakthrough this. You may view this as... You may view this as additional incremental income through the meals tax. However, I would ask you to think about other things that you're considering in terms of spending money, including changes to the elections operation. You need to be judicious about how you handle these commitments and I think that there's a fair amount of downside to this and it's not warranted. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Yes, come on up. Thanks.
How do you make this thing go up? There you go. Good evening. Gary Gill, Ward 6. To answer Conrad's question and a few other people's questions, why it was never built out three years ago is because all the meetings that I went to, which a lot of you all went to as well, when that was being built, before Betsy Mary passed away, she introduced me to the owners of that complex. And the argument was, with the neighborhood, and Alice knows this as well as the city councillor, the biggest problem was coming up was trash, delivery, rats, and pretty much all of those things. The idea, the design of the building and the retail space downstairs was really supposed to be upscale clothing stores. That's why it was never built or designed for deliveries, for trash, or any of that, because of the tight area between the Little Street on the side and Church Street for the delivery trucks. So I hope that answers some of those questions that you all had. But it was supposed to be retail. It was never supposed to be commercial for restaurants. Please take that into consideration, but I have no problem with the 77-seat restaurant that they already have proposed to you because it's a success already in the space that they're at. And with the fact that they have the patio open there, so it's kind of like a win-win kind of a thing, but I don't think that they're going to fall to the wayside after five years. They've got a very successful business. It brings a lot of money to Salem and brings a lot of people and tourists. There's a line waiting outside their restaurant. That's how good the food is. So take all that other stuff into consideration about the buildout, it's going to be crazy. It's going to cost somebody a lot of money, but what about after? What about the trash? What about the rats? What about the garbage? What about the smell? What about the deliveries? You have to take that all into consideration. So please do, and I hope I shared enough. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you for your comment. We appreciate it. You'd like to step up? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Renee Olson, 65 Washington Street. I am the chair of the Board of Trustees for the Bricks condominium trust. And I just wanted to represent the trustees, not the owners. It's hard to speak for 61 owners. But we are very much in support of the business going in there and the TIF. It has been a painful two and a half years to have that space empty. We've already heard about some of the challenges and some of the reasons it's been empty for so long. And we've had other businesses look at that space and couldn't make the numbers work. And so we really welcome somebody that's going to be doing that in a responsible way and we think this TIF will really help them do a robust buildout, all of the challenges that they've got to meet there, so that they can have a going concern that we can be proud of, that the whole city can be proud of. And we are very much aware of our position between downtown and the train station, both visually and, you know, bringing people into the downtown area. And we want to do whatever we can to help them be successful in that regard.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening. If I could just say a few more words again. My name is Allison Caffrey and I'm the executive director at Root and we're at 35 Congress Street in Salem. I didn't share earlier, but hopefully folks know, we are a culinary training program here in the city. And so our mission is multifold. We are providing workforce development and training for young people facing challenges to employment and independence through the culinary field. And so our primary mission is to those young people and to prepare them for a career and their path in life, but it's also to work with the restaurant industry. Root was founded in Salem because of the prevalence of the hospitality and restaurant industry. And Settler has really been one of our premier partners at work. Again, they've provided incredible training opportunities. They have very high standards, so I know those 27 new roles will be highly coveted, but it would be fantastic if, you know, a deserving Root graduate could work there. But, you know, again, we're excited to grow our partnership with them and their growing business. I think will just provide more and more opportunities for us to work together. So we fully support this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else in the public here in Chambers? And not seeing none. We'll check soon. No, not seeing any raised, oh, I'm sorry, I do see a raised hand. Let's see. Renus Ostik? I'm going to allow you to talk. Just give me one second to unmute you. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Renus Ostik, Director of the Salem Chamber of Commerce, and I want to thank Kate for giving such an excellent explanation of what the TIF is and how it works because I needed some more education on that as well. I want to congratulate the Chambers on their venture and I do hope that the city will allow the small deferred tax, because it's not even an investment, it's a deferred tax, to happen so that they can make a successful bid for a fantastic restaurant or not. Positives, I think, are enormous, property tax, meals tax, employment, community partnership. But I would say that being one of Kate's partners in the recruitment team and the development team for Salem, the TIF is just a giant tool in the toolbox that seldomly is used, but it's very helpful when you get to properties that are difficult to develop and just need that tiny little bit of help. So it's my hope that you will support this TIF and that you will help make this business be a successful entry business into the town and that we can all go there for a drink or for the ribbon cutting not too soon from now. Thank you.
Thank you, Renus. Appreciate you taking the time to make comment. Great. I'll just check to see if we have any other raised hands, and I don't see any. Do we have any other further questions or discussion from the council on this? No? Okay. Yes, Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. Since this is just with the committee on A&amp;F this evening and there are just the three of us here, I would like to make a motion so we can move this back to council on the 14th, 15th for full vote, for everyone to have their voice. I will say that, I'll be honest, I came in here kind of wishy-washy on the whole thing. I appreciate Kate's level of detail that was provided. That was extremely helpful, especially in relation to the other applicants and TIFs that have been provided. And in my mind, other than having a time machine to go back and fix the lessons learned from the Brick development, but I just keep thinking it was such a different time, too. You know, we've learned a lot of, a lot of lessons since 2020 and this will just be one that we need to chalk up as well. But for the, essentially the return on investment that we're getting for this one just seems like definitely a no-brainer to me. So on that note, I will move for return to the council. And I believe we have two items in front of us this evening, so we'll do two motions.
Yes, we do.
Okay, so the first motion that I'd like to make is that we return number 61 for the resolution back to council with a recommendation for adoption.
Okay, so Counselor Stott's motion is for number 61, resolution for tax incremental financing for 65 Washington Street. Do we have a second? Okay. Counselor Prozynski, motions for a second and all in favor from the committee. And not in favor. So that is two to one in favor. The motion carries. Do we have another motion?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a second motion on number 62, that the tax incremental finance agreement for the Chambers property holdings be returned to council with a positive recommendation.
Okay. Counselor Stott, motions to move item number 62, the TIF agreement with 65 Washington Street, to move back to the full council with a positive recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Counselor Prozynski. All on the committee in favor. The motion carries two to one. And I would like to take a minute to thank everyone for all the time and work that went into this. We had a great proposal. We're giving a lot of information, which was really helpful. And everyone present here giving comment, providing answers to all the questions. I really, I really appreciated the due diligence here. So everyone had all the information, you know, to come to a decision and get us all educated on these TIFs because it does sound like we'll be seeing more of them. So I appreciate that very much. And one final motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Counselor Stott, motions to adjourn. All in favor? Yes, thank you. We are adjourned. Appreciate you.